I'd like to bring the East Hampton City Council Public Safety Meeting to order for March 4th, 2017.
April.
April, sorry. Thank you, dear. We do have the minutes from 3:00, 7:17?
The 3:03 meeting.
3:03 meeting?
Yeah, 9:07.
Yep. So I would take a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
I'll move the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So our first order of business is the application for a new license for the owner of E to Z Storage Properties LLC, Autumn Properties LLC, for a convenience store with gasoline and gas. So this is an application to be able to store fuel on the property. And we have a representative from Cumberland Farms here. Lou, I apologize if I forget your surname.
Luke DiStefano.
Luke DiStefano.
Can I ask you to spell that for the record?
Sure, I'd like to give you the business card, that makes it easier. So, as mentioned, this is an application for a new fuel storage license at the proposed Cumberland Farms to be situated at 221 North Hampton Street here in the city of East Hampton. I'm sure you're very familiar with the site. It's currently a vacant piece of land. It's a little over 270,000 square feet right now. It's a larger portion, a piece of which about 80,000 square feet, give or take, is going to be subdivided off. And if we're lucky enough to receive all the permits, the new Cumberland Farms will be constructed on that piece, which is basically located on the northern end of the larger piece property. We've been to zoning board, we've been to conservation, we've been to planning. We've received the various approvals from those boards. And the last piece of the puzzle from a city standpoint is the underground flammable storage license, which is why we're here tonight. The project in a nutshell is 4,700, give or take, square foot Cumberland Farms convenience store with six multi-product gasoline and diesel dispensers located immediately in front underneath a canopy. This is very similar to any of the new Cumberland Farms you've seen in the area, and West Springfield has one, Westfield has a new one. It's going to look and operate basically exactly like that. From a fuel storage standpoint, they're looking for 40,000 gallons of total underground storage. That includes 24,000 gallons of regular gasoline, 8,000 gallons of premium gasoline, and 8,000 gallons of diesel. Those will be, or those products will be housed in two tanks. Each tank is a 20,000 gallon tank. It's a compartmentalized tank, so you actually have a 12,000 gallon tank and an 8,000 gallon tank inside the larger 20,000 gallon tank. And that's pretty typical for gasoline facilities here in northeast. The fuel dispensing system itself will be state-of-the-art. It will have all the bells and whistles, overfill protection, spill containment, 24-hour system monitoring, so that the system, if installed, will basically meet and exceed all of the federal, state, and local regulations as it relates to the dispensing of motor fuel. I can go into as much detail as you'd like relative to the tanks. I have a full set of pump and tank plans. And if you want, I can give you a 45-minute presentation on the fuel dispensing system and all the bells and whistles, but my guess is...
I'm gonna say not necessarily.
I've been doing this 23 years, and nobody has said give me that presentation. I'm waiting, so I'm done.
I'm interested to hear what the conservation committee had to say. I'm curious about lake water runoff, that kind of stuff.
Sure. We ultimately got through that process, I believe it was notice of intent. They were the first board or commission that we had appeared before. There are some wetlands that exist, and you can see them on the plan here. We had the wetlands flagged. They basically run like this, and then they run a little bit behind the property as well. We are ultimately required to mitigate any stormwater runoff from this property prior to it exiting. And we're required not only to pretreat it, but we're also required to release it at a rate that's no more intense than what currently exists today. So ultimately, what's being proposed is all the runoff from the entire paved portion of the property is going to be collected via a series of catch basins located around the perimeter. Those are deep-sum catch basins and oil-water hoods. They will convey the runoff to a pretreatment unit prior to the runoff being directed into a basin here in the back of the site. We also have some area underground where we have some other infiltration systems proposed. So it's a pretty state-of-the-art stormwater management system that we have proposed. And again, something that will meet and exceed not only the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Guidelines requirements, but the city of East Hampton guidelines as well.
Can you go into a little bit of detail about what the procedure is for filling these tanks? Because that's usually when accidents could possibly happen.
Sure. Basically, you have fuel delivery trucks that will enter the property. The way we envision, and if you've ever seen a fuel delivery truck, basically what happens is they pretty much all the time fuel off the passenger side of the tractor-trailer. So the way we have it situated is the truck will pull into the site here. It will basically sit at this position. The driver will be able to drop product into any of the tanks and then basically make a complete U-turn throughout the property. There's no backing up, there's no need for undue turning movements. A lot of sites here in New England, they're small. You've got trucks that need to stick out into the right of way, or they're blocking the front door. Here you have none of that. We've positioned the tanks in such a way that we can have a tractor-trailer truck fueling the tanks and still allow for complete access around the property, access to parking. When the driver's actually dropping product, he connects to a fill tube. It's a sealed connection. That fill tube has a spill bucket around it that can contain, I think these are 10-gallon spill buckets. They may be five gallons, but I think they're 10. And basically what that's designed to do is take any drips that may come when the operator either connects or disconnects the hose. Inside, there are monitors in those overfill buckets. The system itself is designed to basically alert the fuel delivery driver that at 90% of the tank's capacity, there's an alarm, there's an audiovisual alarm that's set within earshot and eye shot of the driver, so he can tell, hey, I'm getting close to full. At 95%, effectively the tank's shut down. There are safety features, overfill valves on the fill tubes, so that the driver physically can't put any more product into the tank, at which point he's able to at least dis-
Kind of like your car.
Exactly. But he's able to disconnect, and he's able to still get anything that may be in the tube from the tanker to the tank that can drain out. And then he's able to go on his way. So it's, again, it's pretty typical. I've been doing this as a staff for 23 years. This is pretty much the standard set forth by the Massachusetts DDP now, Department of Fire Services. One of the things that will happen if we do ultimately go forward and the tanks get put in the ground, the fire department will have an opportunity to review the full set of pump and tank plans. There's an underground storage tank installation permit that Cumberland Farms is required to get prior to putting the tanks in the ground. And that's when the local fire department, and those are really the experts, they get a crack at it. And then once the tanks are put in the ground, along with the rest of the fuel dispensing system, the Department of Environmental Protection will come out and do an inspection as well. And they have to sign off on the installation, and they do testing to make sure it's airtight, and then it's pressurized, and there are no leaks. So there's a whole series of testing and protocol that has to be put into place before the first gallon of gasoline ever gets pumped out of those tanks. Again, pretty standard for service stations here in New England, but one that they've been doing a long time, and they've got it pretty much down to a science at this point.
Just two more questions?
Go ahead.
What, I will go now. What's the lifespan of these tanks?
Generally, these, I've heard anywhere from 30 to 40 years. I've read reports that say they're anywhere from, if you read certain reports, 200 to 400,000 of these double-wall fiberglass tanks in the ground. Never been one report of a leak just on their own. You know, there's been other reasons why there might be a leak in the tanks. But generally 30 years, you'll see people start to take them out and replace them.
And last question, are these kept at capacity, at 20,000?
No, they're filled as needed. They're generally trying to keep them relatively full. But it depends on the station itself, it depends on how often they want to get a delivery here. They certainly do not want the tanks to be pumped down too low, because there is some sediment that will build up in the tanks, and that just is bad for the equipment. It's bad for the vehicles. So I don't know exactly how often they'll fill them, or what Cumberland Farms' schedule is, but it's fairly regular. They run their own fleet of fueling trucks, so they can get them out here whenever they need to. But it'll generally be, you'll probably see a truck. My guess is you'll see a truck here probably every other day, maybe every day, if the station is doing that well and pumping that much product. Typically, when they're onsite, they're only onsite for about 30 or 40 minutes, because they're only dropping product into one tank at a time. They typically don't fill all of the tanks at a time.
So it'd be pretty comparable to the other gas stations in town?
Very, I would assume. Any new gas station that's been around for probably 15 years or so probably has somewhere in the 40,000 gallon range of storage. And the number of fuel deliveries is always based on the amount of gas they're selling.
Did I see an email from Barbara that there's some sort of timeline that's associated with this type of request?
So we'll just, yes. They need to get an add-in, which Barbara will do, and notify the auditors seven days before the public hearing. So we'll set the public hearing tomorrow, that'll be two weeks from tomorrow. Once that's set tomorrow, two weeks to hit that, we have one week to get to that one week deadline. But Barbara does all the language and actually places the ad. I think you guys have to pay him with her.
Yeah, I believe, we've got all that. I know we've had some pretty extensive discussions.
Yeah, she'll probably contact you Thursday.
Yeah, because we can, I mean, I don't see any reason why they couldn't bring this word tomorrow to set the hearing.
No, I don't see it either.
And what's, I'm just curious, what's the proposed timeline on the project?
My understanding is they want to get building as soon as they can. I know they've got a site getting ready to go under construction in West Springfield. I think next Monday, they've got another one looking to go under construction in Winchon. The following Monday. You know, they don't want this to drag out too long, because then you start building there in the Lincoln lines, and that just makes it more difficult.
And did the chief motor have anything to say, one way or the other? We do see his approval here, looks like everything went.
I don't remember any real egregious comments from the fire department or police department during the board approval process. And my office, myself oversaw the design and permitting. There are always concerns about access of a fuel delivery truck, which we had shown a fuel delivery turning movement template. You know, they don't want to see it in front of parking, things like that. But I don't remember anything beyond the normal, do this and you're okay. Ultimately, we got all the approvals, as I said. So any comments that would have been issued, we've addressed. I would say they're satisfied. And again, they get another bite at the apple when Cumberland Farms files for the USP install permit.
And I took a look at your company as far as civil engineering goes, and it looks like you guys have a pretty stellar reputation.
Yeah, we've been around 30-plus years. We have 650 employees and 23 offices up and down the east coast, Atlanta, Dallas. And it started with one bowler doing mobile gas canopies out of a dentist's office by himself with one other guy. He's grown it organically ever since. So our office here in Massachusetts, we have two, one in Southborough where I work out of, that's about 50 people. And then another one in Boston, which is about 12. And we have another office next nearest one to Alvin, I think that's another 50 or so. And we cover the New England region.
I'm going to, unless you have any other questions, or make a motion? Make a motion to bring this to the full council and set the public hearing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you very much.
So you don't need to be there tomorrow, but on the 19th, you may want to be there.
Yeah, for the council.
Yeah, for the public hearing.
Yep. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And let us know if you have any questions about the timeline or anything, we can help with that.
Will do.
And you already have a list of auditors?
Uh, yeah, I believe we have.
I saw that, yeah.
I think we had everything, it was just a matter of nailing down the process, which I know Tina from my office has done, and we've got a whole library list.
She and I had emailed.
Pardon me?
She and I had emailed.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good trip back.
I should, I'm going to West Springfield.
Oh, there you go.
It's a long commute every other day, but not every day.
Second item agenda is that with your crossing.
Anything new happening at the school?
I don't have anything new. Do you want to catch Salem up a little bit on that?
I'm concerned with the, you know, the speed of people coming down Hoyoke Street. The crosswalks, not my crosswalk from Clark to over to across the street, and then the Nene's crosswalk, because people can't see there. And it's just a matter of, actually JP came down and stood with me one afternoon to see what it was like. And he goes, wow, I don't know what we can do.
It's really tricky.
What about the cones?
Well, that's it, he was thinking of cones, and he was actually thinking of cones as flashing lights. You know, it would be cones that I would be basically responsible for.
Right, just to pop out?
Yeah, pop out when I'm there.
Keep them... I may not want to miss that one, right? Keep them at Maple.
Maple, keep them there, because they do have a cone that sits on the crosswalk there that's just left out, but I would put this someplace, you know, there. So yeah, that was his thoughts. But you know, what I come down to is that you can't teach people how to drive. I was in the middle of the crosswalk, and a car came down Hoyoke Street, and he's on the phone, and he just zips through the crosswalk on the park. And I'm in the middle of there, and there was two old ladies on the other side going, my God.
Well, I literally saw it at Whitebrook. I was with, I was with my kids, and I just picked them up, and we saw a pizza delivery guy crosswalk, the crossing guard was in with his thing, with kids. And the pizza delivery guy just went right through, the cross, he literally had to pull the kids back because they were going to get hit.
Yeah, I mean, again, it's education, and people, you can't teach people common sense.
Yeah, and I went and looked for a little while and drove in every entrance to see there's no good warning coming down 141. You hit that corner, and all of a sudden it's like, five roads, crosswalks, school, like, I mean, you just have to kind of know to approach that slowly.
So how's the school building process coming? The meeting you just came from? And that's a solution right there.
Oh, it's a solution, but it won't be for five years.
Yeah, when you come down Hoyoke, it's going to change to 25, but if you don't, slow 125, then all of a sudden...
You're taking that curb.
Yeah, and then surprise, surprise.
Yeah, and if somebody is crossing on the Nene's crosswalk, and there are people stopping there, I mean, I'm just amazed that there aren't more. I mean, people have good brakes, obviously, because they have to slam on them.
No, I mean, it's like five roads that come together.
Yeah, five roads that have to all meet there, yeah. And, you know, again...
I couldn't even imagine what like the sign would look like if you were trying to be like, these are the roads.
Five-headed sign, middle of the road.
People crashing trying to read the sign.
I know.
I know, I want to carry, I want to have three different signs, like one that says, speed limit is 25. Slow down, please, and get off your phone.
Maybe you should have, I mean, it sounds silly, but there's, you know, I could envision up the road before the corner, a cone that has like a little, like, speed limit 25, like a small thing, then another cone, and then so just to kind of warn people, especially at that time of the day.
That's what JP had said, like, at the corner where Stone Path and Hoyoke. You know, having a cone there, and then me having a cone, you know, in my spot.
That's what we're trying to think of, because we can't really do anything permanent.
No.
But, you know, it does put the burden on you, which isn't exactly ideal.
It's not ideal, but if it gets people to...
We're talking about public safety, so, you know, you already do so much. This would be asking a little bit more of your business.
You know, if the cones, you know, as long as they don't get stolen, if they're left by, you know, the school, you know. But yeah, I mean...
Do they have an outdoor shed at Maple, right?
Yeah, but I don't know, but, you know, I get there at 8 o'clock in the morning, and I don't think anybody's there yet. But, you know, they got, nobody's touched the cone that sits in front of Maple. You know, that's left there overnight, so, you know. But yeah, I know, it's a little extra for me, but I just, you know, do anything to keep people to slow down and just think more when they're driving. But then again, today, I just, you know, I really was freaking out. Pollops was, Pollops half-ton truck was delivering to the little corner store, and they parked right in front of the Nene's, in front of the fire, you know, whatever, yeah, and the crosswalk. And they just parked right there with their flashing lights on in the afternoon, and it's like, I wanted to go over and say, please don't do that, because people couldn't see anything. They had to go around them, and it's, you know.
So if we did a cone like that, is that something the police department could put out?
Every day. They probably wouldn't want to. I mean, it's something they could do, but I doubt they'd want to. I mean, and they do, you know, every, I mean, I, all three of my kids went to Maple, so, you know, they do on occasion patrol.
Oh, yeah, no, I think they're really good about it. Yeah, I'm just trying to, you know, is there a place to keep it? Does it make sense that we make it a city thing?
I mean, if they're not happy, I can take them home with me and bring them back without seeing, I mean, I walked out.
An effective one, you'd want it to be, you know, probably about this high, and those are pretty heavy.
Are the DPW or something like that?
I mean, we might be able to cure them if we do.
Yeah, they weren't, you know...
In case they don't last long, they get stolen, they get hit by cars.
I mean, they definitely couldn't be permanent, we'd have to, you'd have to, in the morning and afternoon, you'd have to take them, put them out and bring them back. That would be the only way to make it manageable.
Yeah. And yeah, it's more work for me, but it, you know, helps to keep the traffic a little bit more noticeable that it's, you know, slow down, please, you know, yeah.
So have you seen this cone of lights on it?
No, no, that's what JP is going, well, hey, he's never seen anything.
Sounds made up to me.
Yeah, it is.
You could just, you could buy, you know, they, on Amazon, you can buy a $5 flashing light for bikes. You could literally just put it on top of a cone, you know.
I would assume that anything we put in the road would have to conform to some sort of standardization.
I still remember when we had the...
Wouldn't be brighter than that sign on Park Street, that's for sure.
Sorry?
If you've seen the sign on Park Street, the flash is at you, this thing is like a lightning bolt. I'm surprised you could have that seizure.
Is that actually the speed limit on Park Street?
No, it's, I mean, it's, the speed limit after you go past the bridge is 20, but...
But I mean, if all of a sudden 10 hours a week, there's a cone right in the middle of the road, that's going to turn into a problem, potentially.
Right.
You know, if people are flying around that corner.
I know, after the first cultural chaos we had, they, by mistake, left the cone in the middle of the road, because the road was blocked off. I was amazed the tractor-trailer trucks had no problem going around it. But DPW didn't want to leave it there, because they figured it would get hit eventually, and probably would have, yeah.
I mean, one thing, I think we mentioned it last month, but, you know, the police chief said he's going to send more people around at those hours, but also, if you're there, it's almost parked in front of a hydrant or on a crosswalk, or you can get a license plate, call the police. Those are all illegal things.
He had, well, he had his flashes on, so I guess he figured he was...
No.
Yeah.
Nope. Just calm.
Yeah, so like you said, I mean, there's a lot...
And then we were just also, with the new businesses that are now in that block, somebody, I mean, not that there's parking, there's only one parking spot up front, but somebody had stopped to let somebody off to go to the hair salon. I mean, they didn't stay there that long, but they stopped right in front of it, which is a bad area. And I'm thinking, okay, this is, you know, now that the three businesses are there, there's going to be a little, little bit more congestion there, maybe.
It's just a bad setup.
It is.
I mean, you come down that hill, you've got a good rate of speed, and you've got a straightaway, and then, you know...
You know, you're coming down, moving miles an hour down the hill.
No, it's not a big friendly ball pit at the end of it either. All right, so maybe we'll take a look.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, that's the only, that's the easiest and logical and cheapest way is to have a cone with flashing lights.
I would say, I mean, just from my layperson's perspective, but I think it would make sense before the curve happens to have a cone. It just alerts people that they're going to be coming into this. Especially, especially at school time.
Yeah.
Before school, after school. Because it's, the traffic pattern changes so dramatically at those times. You know, I mean, someone would have to go out and take that cone, and, you know, I kind of envisioned like three cones. So one, like, I can't even, I need to move the streets.
There's Stone Path.
Stone Path is the one that comes out.
So you come down on 141, Stone Path is to the right of the...
Luther Church.
Luther Church. And then Clark Street is on the left-hand side of the church. And then as you come after the curved building where Flagwell used to be, there's a left that goes in between Nene's.
So Stone Path, I would see one right in front of Stone Path, like right before the turn for Stone Path. And then one, like, at the, right at the Clark Street, and then one in the, in the crosswalk. Like three cones to alert people that this is a dangerous place.
In the middle of Oak Street, aren't you?
Yeah, right, right in the W L line. You know, because when you see a cone in the W L line, generally your first, you're like, oh.
Construction.
Yeah, like, I gotta slow down.
Yeah, something going on.
Right. People respect the cone.
So anyway, that's just, you know, it would be three cones. I don't know where we'd get the three cones, or who would deal with it, but...
Well, I mean, they're not terribly expensive.
No.
I mean, they have those little cones, not the little ones, but the little ones where there's...
I was thinking about like kind of the tall, narrow ones.
You could just put a flashing bike light right in that thing.
You can.
Yeah, I mean, it would be, those are super cheap, those are $5.
I also got a text message from my dad.
If you, if you bought a cone that had a flashing light on it, it'd probably be $150. You can get it for $5 on Amazon.
That was $35 from an absolute terrible company that we're not ordering from.
I mean, well, here's, we don't have any ordering powers, anyway.
No, we don't.
We don't even have a budget, so, I mean, I would suggest we take this off the agenda, since there's no official action, we can take as opposed to it's me. But continue to follow up with the police and the DPW. Already, we've already had conversations with them, they're thinking about it also. And you said the police have already upped their presence, which is awesome. But for today, yeah, I think that makes sense. Just keep following up, and at least, at least there's people that have put their heads around it, and...
Yeah, there's more than, yeah.
And even if it's not on the agenda, you can come in, and these are all just public meetings, so you can always come in if you have any more concerns, or if it doesn't get better, or gets worse.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, because these, these are looking like they're relatively reasonably priced, you know.
You know, maybe, maybe it's, you know, you make a recommendation to the principal at Maple and say, you know, it would be great for us to have a couple cones. And, you know, I don't know if, I don't know if we necessarily have to go through, you know, the superintendent or anything, the principal might have, you know, some discretionary...
An incidental budget?
Yeah, discretionary budget for, you know, things that are, come up like cones. You know, I mean, that could be like the easiest solution.
Well, I also think we could probably crowdsource the funded proceeds as well. We could have a bake sale.
We could probably just ask the DPW, say, hey, we have an extra, we need three cones.
Yeah. Exactly.
I mean, that's like the budget version. Okay, if we wanted to make a motion to remove that one up here, just a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So then the third thing that is on agenda is another kind of traffic interception thing to... I think with Dan, because I'm not quite sure exactly what we should do. I had somebody reach out because they were unhappy with how High Street bumps into, is it Prospect Street?
Did you have, you had that formally put on the agenda?
I haven't yet. You wrote it in the minutes that it came in.
Under other?
Yeah.
But you never...
But you never.
It's Prospect and High Street, but I just don't know if that's something that should go on our agenda, I mean, it sounds more like just a constituent issue. And I should just bring it up with the police chief.
Yeah, uh, well, people have said less than that, uh, from the information we have so far. There's no official action being requested and there's no real, um, action we can take from what I've heard.
This is what they sent me, do you know what I'm talking about?
I know where, yeah, Prospect and High Street, it's the, it's by the, um.
Biggie?
Yeah.
So.
And they're talking about the.
When you come down.
There's the car that's parking there?
Yeah, all the time, and it's basically left him ninety-degree angle.
You go to a dead end and then you have to turn left.
And there's a little.
Then that's when people went though, it had two different names.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I, I drive down all the time just to go.
To work, yeah.
Just going to the salon.
If someone's parking in a place that's not a parking spot, again, they should call the police.
Yeah, but it's in front of someone's house.
Yeah, it's really.
And I don't think it's identified as no parking.
There's part, there is no sign.
But, but then again, people are allowed to park in front of their house, we feel, if it's no, if it's not no parking on the street, the people are allowed to park in the street. Unless it's, unless it's snow, we're gonna say.
Right.
Which, are we out of, out of April? I think we're out of it now.
Yeah, we're out of it at the first.
Oh, that was April, huh? Um, yeah, so, uh, I don't, I don't, I think that's probably something that that person's gonna have to manage with their neighbor. You know? If it, if there's.
But if you wanna call the chief or call the police and see what they think, but I don't think we need to put on an agenda and get down here and do anything else, so.
I don't think so either.
And I, I mean, honestly, like I said, I've gone, and I'm just sitting right there and I've gone.
And I don't know how a stop sign would work on that, cause it's.
I don't think it would, it wouldn't.
Cause it's, I don't.
And like, I've been going down there where another car's been coming and it's just, it's such a sharp turn, you have to slow, anyway, it's, it's not like posing, it's not like it's a high-speed turn. You know, it's like a.
But that's the complaint, is that some people are using it as a high-speed turn.
I don't see why.
Someone has said that she's almost seen a couple of accidents or almost gotten into a collision.
I don't even know how that's possible, I mean, it's such a sharp turn with cars parked everywhere.
I'm super cautious when I go through it, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Am I allowed to talk?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I'd say, I can't, I go down that way and you just, you go slow, that's all, yeah.
I just go really slow, yeah.
And if someone does do something dumb, then they're gonna hit something and they'll have to deal with it, you know, maybe that's like kind of like life.
Yeah.
If you, if you drive too fast and it puts you in trouble.
It's gonna reach common sense.
That is true, like, I mean, Public Safety Committee is not to.
Counselor Darby waited with the like, eh.
I mean, you could drive around this corner at a hundred miles an hour and end up in the pond, but we can't do anything about that, like that's just someone's dumb action.
Okay, so I'll talk to the chief about it and go take a look.
We got bad drivers on the side, we got bad drivers on the side.
It's just, you know, I don't drive much.
We could impose a mandatory driving test for City of East Hampton.
I went to driver's ed.
I don't know, we'd be hard pressed to do it, but we could try.
That's enough ideas, Counselor Darby.
Oh, I think it's a good idea, that's, that's my next mission.
That's it, I like it.
I like it.
They say the driver's test?
Yeah, it, it's like, attach the excess tax.
Ooh, good.
Didn't they do that where they had like, um, I think Northampton did that, where they have pace cars, and like you would just stick on your car and you would basically promise to drive with speed limit and everything and, cause they were looking for traffic coming measures in and around downtown.
You know, Australia, there's cameras on every traffic light.
Yep.
And they ticket anybody that speeds or runs a red light, and nobody does, cause everybody knows.
There's cameras everywhere.
They're ticking everywhere, it's coming.
Yep.
Yeah, DC does it.
Yeah.
But we're not quite there yet, someday, someday.
And unless there's any new business?
We should do a journey, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.